But thank you, everyone, for joining us for the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board meeting for January 26, 2021. Thank you for all of you who are joining us on Zoom and for all the directors and staff who've joined us today. If you would and you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was mentioning prior to the meeting that I have this phobia that during that portion, I am going to say, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then suddenly someone's going to make me, or sorry, please rise for the National Anthem, and suddenly someone's going to make me sing the National Anthem. So, I, one more down. We will proceed with the roll. So Laura, if you wouldn't mind.
Mueller?
Here.
Grandland? I believe she's having trouble getting on, but. A Samurai?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
All right. We will read this, I want to read this opening statement here quickly. Due to the current and federal state emergency declarations in the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, the guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are speaking. School Board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will determine the order in which Board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the Board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each School Board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Before we proceed, Dawn, how do we add Mary to the roll? She just got on.
You can, she, I just added her. She's fine.
Okay, great. Thanks. Glad you made it, Mary. All right, we will move on to the mission statement. Excuse me. Columbia Heights Public Schools, sorry, my board has gone, my board book has gone nutty. Columbia Heights, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Core values are: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move.
Second, that was Lorian, second?
Second.
Molly? Any discussion on the agenda? All right, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
And Palmer, aye.
Motion carries, great. We're going to move on to the announcements, and I'll begin by reading some dates. On January 29th, Friday, there's no school for a grading day. On February 9th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular School Board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. February 15th, which is a Tuesday, there's no school. February 16th, which, February 15th must be a Monday. That must be a typo in the notes. Can I get a correction on that? February 15th, Monday.
Correct.
Okay. Let me, let me do that. February 16th, Monday, or February 15th, Monday, there is no school. February 16th, which is a Tuesday, at 5:30, there'll be a School Board work session in the community rooms and via electronic means. February 23rd, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, there will be a regular School Board meeting in the community rooms and via electronic means. All right. Superintendent Stenvik, would you like to make another announcement for us, please?
Yeah, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the Board. I would like to acknowledge that Columbia Heights Public Schools experienced a huge loss on Friday with the passing of Assistant Principal Rick Osby. I did have the opportunity to speak with the Columbia Academy staff on Sunday evening, and I am in regular communication with Principal Burkus. We are shocked and in mourning. He really made such a big impact on the district. He lit up every room. He was beloved and a strong member of the Columbia Academy family. I really could go on and on because he meant a lot to me as a friend and a colleague over, you know, working with him closely over a decade. He will just be so, so very missed. So I would just ask that we all please keep Rick's family in your thoughts as they go through this difficult time and as we come together as a school district to heal as well.
And I would just like to ask you, if you're at home or here for the meeting, to join us now for a moment of silence to honor the life of Rick and his role as an educator, his vast impact he had on so, so many students in our district and beyond. Thank you, and our hearts go out to his wife, his children, his family and friends in this time of incredible loss. It seems tough to keep moving forward, but that's what we're going to do, and we will ask the question, Superintendent Stenvik, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right. We'll move on to communications to the Board. Sorry, toggling between documents. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the Board administrate, or that the administration follow-up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. I don't see anyone here. So we will continue on with the consent agenda that contains the personnel report. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
I'll move.
Hold on, I'm Zoom, I'm on board book, not Zoom. Was that Molly? Or was that Mary? Mary, okay. Mary makes the motion. A second?
Holla.
Holla makes the second, great. Discussion on the consent agenda. All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Motion carries, great. We'll move on to a fun part, to the acknowledgements of contributions. I'd like, I'll ask for motion, and then I'll read this resolution.
I'll move.
Okay, that's, Lorian, second?
Second.
Molly, great. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequest donations or gifts of any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the peoples thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background and the amount of $1,903.55. Detailed background includes: donation of $100 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Employee Match for Student Needs. Donation of $200 was made to North Park Elementary by the Kiwanis for Student Needs. A donation of $220 was made to Highland Elementary by the Kiwanis for Student Needs. A donation of $280 was made to Columbia Academy by Kiwanis for Student Needs. A donation of $246.80 was made to North Park Elementary by the Black Bod Giving Fund for Supplies. A donation of $148.75 was made to North Park Elementary by Ordway Center for Performing Arts for Field Trip. A donation of $200 was made to North Park Elementary by Northeast Kiwanis Foundation for Setting Three DCD Program. A donation of $98 was made to North Park Elementary by Minnesota Historical Society for Field Trips. Value in kind donations include a donation of coast, coat, coats, I'll take that A. I'm assuming no one donated a coast. Coats, that'd be funny, though, that'd be amazing. Donation of coats, scarf, and toiletries was made to Valley View Elementary by Holly Peters for Student Needs, estimated value of $100. A donation of coats, hats, mittens, blankets was made to Valley View Elementary by Krish Wedling for Student Needs, estimated value of $310. Total fiscal year 2020 monetary contributions to date, $63,378.56. Discussion.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead, Laura, thank you.
When we have these, these donations, I, I really want to express, you know, we say that we, we're so grateful for the support of our community, and we truly, truly are with these individuals and these organizations that really, that really think about our students, especially during times like these. Thank you so much. I, I continue to be in awe of, of our community and how much they support our kids.
I would just echo what Laura says. Thank you so much for the generosity of our community and partners outside of our community who are willing to contribute to the needs of our students and our school district. We thank you so, so much. All right, let's move on, sorry, back to the agenda. We'll move on to reports from members of the Board. So let's start with Lorian.
Knew that you were going to choose me to start first.
You're right here.
I'm right here. Since our last meeting, I attended another chair meeting and a special called meeting as well as the work session last week. I have had conversations with Mary Grandland. I have had a Zoom call with our Mayor of Columbia Heights, Mayor Marquez Simula, as the City Council liaison. I also attended last night's City Council meeting virtually, and the City Council, at that meeting, they reported on the Centennial Celebration updates, as well as talked about the Snow Blast, which is this weekend at Housit Park. So check the city's website for more information. That sounds like an amazing event that's happening. And I attended the chair meeting just prior to this. I also have attended two of the three sessions of the MSBA Virtual Conference, so I've been doing those as well.
Nice. Well, all right. Laura?
Well, I, I don't have a whole lot to report. I did attend the, the special meeting last week as well as the work session, and I had a short conversation with our superintendent. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Laura. Holla?
I attended the special call meeting and the work session last week.
All right, thank you. Mary?
So I also attended the special call and the work session and spoke with Director, or Vice, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Mueller. A couple times, I spoke with Principal Coolman and some parents throughout the week, and I also was able to watch the, the play that our students put on via YouTube, so that was really fun to watch that. And I'm sure I'm blanking on other things, so, but as always, you know, there's always something that we forget, right?
Yep. Thank you. Molly?
Thanks, Maddie. I also attended the special call session and the work sessions last week, watched and viewed some online meetings and some livestreamed basketball games, and I've also had several conversations with parents in our community. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Same general script for me there, it's special call meeting, the work session. We had a chair meeting just prior to this meeting. I did have a short phone call with Superintendent Stenvik and was able to actually attend a swim meet as a timer and then also catch one as a fan online. So fans are able to watch the livestream, so we're appreciative for the athletic department and technology teams for getting those together for all the Columbia Heights super fans out there. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report for us tonight?
Madam Chair, yes, I do. We continue to monitor the COVID-19 case rates, and they are ticking down steadily this week, over the last couple of weeks, actually, which is good news. We are planning, of course, for early childhood, pre-kindergarten, and kindergarten students coming to campus beginning this Monday. Quarter three material pickup is actually this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at all schools, and Thursday is an evening option to pick up materials for those who cannot come during the day. For COVID-19 vaccines, as of today, about 40 of our staff have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and we have 147 more staff for this week to be vaccinated. I'm not sure how many doses we will be given next week, but we hope to be able to provide the vaccine to all staff who would like to have it. I participated in a meeting with the District 916 Search Firm Consultant for the superintendent search out there, so they've, they pulled together the superintendent, all of the District 916 superintendents for that. And a big celebration this week is that it is Paraprofessional Week, so we are honoring our educational assistants, want to thank them for all that they do to support students and families in Columbia Heights. And lastly, I had communication with various Board members, and I want to thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you so much. We will now move on to building vision card for Valley View Elementary. Hello, Principal Coolman.
Thank you, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the Board. I am excited to be here tonight to be able to report on my data. Last year at this time, I was reporting on historical data, so we, we have a lot to celebrate, and we have some areas of growth. So am I sharing my screen? You'll have to help me with some of the technical pieces. Yep?
Yes, please.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Our core, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunities for each and every child, for every learner, all belong, all succeed. Core values: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Informational update, no governance questions, please. And our mission and core values. All right. As we moved in, and I'm going to try to minimize the screen here, so licensed staff participating in health and wellness initiatives and professional development, thanks to the District Office and the opportunities that they've given us, 100% of staff have participated, so we are in the vision category. Teacher absences, I am very happy to report, dropped from 180 to 140, so we had a 20 cent, 20% reduction from school year 19 to school year 20. And I think that goes to the culture and climate that we're creating at Valley View. It's less stressful, and more people are able to be there. The number of student attendance days is still not released yet from MDE, so we are not able to give an accurate depiction of where we're at right now. My gut feeling says we're in the progression or vision category, but I'm, I'm holding back until we get those numbers. Very important part of our, our training here at Valley View is the mental health screener for children, and we had 90-plus percent of our students take that screener. Of that, we are servicing through Lee Carlson, our social worker, through different support groups, lunch groups, friend groups throughout the year. PD sessions focused on trauma. We had three official PD sessions, not to mention many more staff meetings that might not have been official training, but discussing children's needs and how we can best meet their needs. One area that we are exceptionally proud of at Valley View is our metric around student experience and student climate. Our out-of-school suspensions have, have decreased significantly, to the point where I believe, if I, my numbers are right, we had 14 total out-of-school suspensions, putting us in the 10% or fewer category. In our, same thing for our in-school suspensions, we dropped them from 89 to down to 39. So again, 10% or fewer of our students receiving a, a in-school suspension. What I'm very proud to, to present to you is that we have really decreased the disproportionality of our black and brown students being suspended at this time. That has decreased dramatically, too. We still have areas of growth here that we will continue to work on, but we've made significant strides in that. Teachers using the, the learning management systems, Schoology, Google Classroom, whether we had to say or not during the pandemic, we were engaged in them, and we were fully engaged, I would say, 100% of our classrooms. So for school year 20, we're in the vision stage. Math and reading assessments, this was an area of growth that we can, we still work on or will continue to work on. We did not meet, or grow out of our baseline from the fall to winter data because we did not take the, the spring fast assessments to determine how much growth or stagnant status we had. So that's an area of growth. Math facts is another one. We did not get the opportunity to take our end-of-year assessments for math facts, but what I'd like to report to the Board is that we did some significant work through PLCs on math facts mastery, and not so much automaticity of those math facts, but actually learning of the strategies to solve them, giving skill, the students skills to be able to work with them and improve their, improve their fluency. So we are looking this year to increase that as we move into more of an in-person learning and work from there. But we are really, truly focusing on PLCs and the strategies behind them, not just a kill-and-drill assessment. Percent of parents using ParentView. This has been a struggle for Valley View, I will be honest with that. This year, we have taken, we've moved from less than 50% to around 50 to 64%. This year, we took the initiative of pushing out, in our last mailing of report cards, direct instructions, and usernames and passwords to families, and then we are supporting them in accessing their online report cards this round. This will help us increase that and also help our parents increase their access to ParentView and what that holds to them as they move on to middle school and high school. Communications with families, I have done well over 20 communications to families. We are pushing out a lot of information all the time, whether it's in updates, reminders, CSOW posts, Blackboard Connect posts, so really trying to make an open, an honest atmosphere at Valley View and welcoming parent, parent input. Percent of families enrolled in CSOW, we are well over the 70 mark, especially now, but even last year, we were really utilizing that tool to communicate with our families, and especially at the end of last year, as we entered into our pandemic and our shelter-in-place order at home, that was our primary mode of communication with families and students. So percentage of teachers, same thing, all of ours are using that and utilizing that tool and learning new techniques each day. So it's a, a great skill, even though we were forced into it, it's one that is going to benefit us for years to come. Events, academics, and community building throughout the, through family engagement. Last year, we engaged family members well over eight times throughout the year. Our goal is at least once or twice a month, having some kind of event or parent engagement activity. This year has been a little bit more difficult, and last, last spring was a lot, a lot more difficult, I would say. And with the shelter in place, it diminished our capacity to really engage our families outside of school and also to invite them into school, but we're continuing to work on that, and we did exceed that prior to COVID. Families visiting CSOW at least one time per week, again, it's, we, we were forced to, in a welcome, positive way that we've, we've done it and embraced it, but we are in the vision category as well of over 75% of our families. Percent of families participating in the pre-K, pre-K5 conferences. Each time we have conferences that I've been there, we've went into the low to mid 90% of parents connecting with us at family conferences, and I'm very proud to present that this year with our Zoom conferences, we've had an amazing attendance rate. We will look, we will look to the future to see if that's a viable option, as ease of use for families and also ease of, of use for our, our teachers at school. Parents returning mandatory forms, we are in the 90% range. We have great student and teacher outreach appearance to get those, those forms in. We are working all the time to make sure that we're getting our voices heard from our families, but also making sure that critical information is coming back in. It takes a lot of hard work, but it pays off in the end. Athletics and activities, and grades one through five, our encore programs up to COVID were, were excelling. We had a wonderful ninjas in the morning, whereas it's a kind of American ninja course set up in our gym, which was hugely popular, and hopefully, post-pandemic, we can, we can rekindle that and bring our, our students back in for, for those activities and all the other encore activities that we've had as well. Percent grade levels and departments using common planning time. Last year, we spoke about PLCs, and you've probably heard this from Principal Sasek, but we're engaging in a lot of PLC work. Valley View dove right in last year with me and engaged in three or four cycles each grade level and department, and used our planning time to work together to really dig into some of the academics that we felt needed some, some support. So I'm proud to say that we had 90% of our teachers were using common planning time. Percent of teachers using grade level instruction in a curriculum, that's one of the best things about a PLC, is that we're all in there using a common curriculum and making sure it's very standards-based, and then working on how to support them in their use of it. So we're in the 95% range for that as well. Annual variation from established budgets, I felt my budget was strong last year. We were able to carry over the 10% into this year and then utilize the rest of our budget to support our guided reading library that teachers will be utilizing as they're back in person in their small guided groups. So very happy about that. And then to our goals for the 1920. So we, 75% of students will be, would be able to articulate and respond to a Level One, Two, and Three question, according to Costa. That's our first goal, and knowing that we want kids to be able to understand, but also be able to articulate what type of question, and a Level Three question is really a critical thinking. So we want critical thinkers coming out of Valley View as we send them over to CA, so they're able to engage in conversations, not just remedial, remedial learning or just learning. 100% of teachers will utilize weekly PLCs to inform instructions, improve student proficiency by 10%, as measured by the reading MCAs. That is a lofty goal, and I think it's a very lofty goal in our current time, but we are definitely utilizing our PLCs. And I, again, I, I'm sure you've heard of our work around the PLCs and our collaborative planning time and setting the foundations for which our PLCs will grow from, has been the majority of our work up to this point. So it's, it's been exciting work and work that is critical for, for years to come. So whether you're, what we are doing to achieve these goals, so we are implementing the literacy PLCs, as we talked about, really looking at prioritizing our power standards, coming up with rubrics, and also then writing assessments that will drive the true PLC process. So prioritizing state standards, implementing Reader's Workshop, and then professional development on avid strategies and utilizing benchmark data to target instruction. So those assessments will give us our benchmark data. So those assessments will give us our benchmark data so that we're able to personalize the learning for our students. Student achievement will increase by five percent as measured by the MCA math, MCAs, math fact fluency and classroom assessments. How we're doing that, we're implementing math PLCs. We're prioritizing those standards, looking at a vertical articulation. And that was probably some of the most fun work we did last year with the math facts and assigning grade levels to master the different fact levels. And then also then looking at how one grades work builds into the next or is the scaffolding for the next grades work and how critical it is if we want students to stay on that trajectory of of math, math fluency. And the implementation of math workshop to enhance personalized learning and then the basic math fact fluency. And as I said, that is a critical point in all of our math, math work that we're doing is students need to know those basic math facts. But I also know the stress that a time test has on students and what that can do to their emotional well being and and their anxiety. So we're really focusing on a lot of math fact fluency in terms of what skill or what strategy we can use to learn those facts and how we can learn them quicker or practice them. So. Questions you may have.
All right, questions. Molly, then Holla.
Thanks, Natty. Hi, Mr. Coleman. I can't, you know, emphasize enough my appreciation for all the staff and what they're doing at Valley View. Is this my consider that's echoing?
You sound good to me.
Okay, it's echoing back at mine a lot, so I apologize. But my question is just going back to the suspensions, the disproportionality is. Can you just talk a little bit about the numbers that were used in the timeframes? I'm just concerned that we're presenting, you know, a better picture than than in reality because we're in distance learning. And how does that look and kind of where we're going to gauge that so that we're not looking at a super positive year and then next year we drop again or something like that? How is that being taken into consideration?
Yep. So we did apples to apples. We did September first to March thirteenth in the eighteen nineteen year and the nineteen twenty. So we excluded any of the distance learning at that point or heights from home learning. So that was not part of the data that we used to calculate the numbers we gave you. Yeah, we are not, we're not trying to inflate that because in distance learning, we had no problems. It was beautiful at Valley View.
Right.
But it was the hard work of the teachers and staff prior to that that we wanted to share with you.
Perfect. Thanks for explaining that because truly I don't think that was presented in the data. So I appreciate that.
No, great question. Thank you.
Ahala.
Yeah, thanks for presenting that data. And I was going to ask what Molly asked, so I appreciate the question and the answer. In the beginning, I think it was A1, you mentioned something about the mental health screener. I'm curious, which one are you guys using right now?
I, that is a great question. I I don't know for sure. Our school psychologist implemented that and I got that data from her and she is not with us at this time. Or she she's not employed by Columbia Heights. I can look into that and get that answer for you, though. Mary?
Mary, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Yes, so much like Molly asked Holla's question, Holla asked mine. So I I appreciate that. I think that information is really helpful. Just on a just, you know, thinking about how are we collecting that information and what information are we collecting? Secondly, I want to say as a parent who has had one kid all the way through Valley View and another one almost through Valley View, and I've seen a number of principal changes. I just want to thank you for your leadership and for, you know, the work that you're doing to support the team, especially, you know, over the last ten months. I volunteered in that school the Monday before the we all went home. And I was able to see sort of some of the changes and hear from staff and families and continue to hear from it. So I think that leadership is really important and I want to thank you so much for it. And for always being available and making yourself available to staff and to and to families. So. I think that your leadership definitely shows in some of that data, for sure.
Thank you. I I I think I just bring out the best of the staff. They're the ones that truly deserve the their credit. They're doing, they're doing the the work.
I have a question. You mentioned vertical, the vertical alignment for things like math, for math and things. How, how has the, how will this be impacted in in coming years? That's what I I've just been thinking about that. I know it's not just Valley View, but you just happen to be the the person who's with with us this evening. With the lack of assessments, I suppose you're going to try to hit the ground running with those when you get back to understand where the students are at.
So yes. And I, so the work that we've done this year, I guess what I want to do is take it back to, you know, the district and and we've already informed the board that we've dived headfirst into PLCs. And PLCs are an amazing tool to unify teachers, to look at practice. But you need some foundational skills and some of those foundational skills just to even engage in the PLC is a common, common set of standards. And so we have that with the state standards. Those state standards are very comprehensive. There's many standards there that we can't possibly all get to in a given year. So what we've taken on the task is to prioritize. And we engaged all Columbia Heights teachers, and this is what's been beautiful. And in a time of just awful pandemic, we're in this, there's some beautiful things that are coming out. And I think that's what we really have to focus on after the pandemic and look back is that we've had the opportunity of time, a gift of time to bring all of our third grade teachers, all of our second grade teachers together and look at those state standards and say, what do we want to teach? What do our students in Columbia Heights need to know to be successful in the world, to be to be successful at CA? Because we want to give them our best and brightest students so they can do their job to get their, you know, get kids ready for the high school. And so we looked at those standards and say, which ones do we really need to hone in on? Once we've done that, we've done some criteria rubrics, like what does it mean to be proficient at this standard? What does that look like? And now we're in the stage of writing assessments. And that can be really difficult and it's, I'm a geek. I enjoy it. I I'm a nerd. I love this type of work. I did a lot of this work when I was in St. Paul, so bringing it to Columbia Heights is just, it's been a joy. Director Tuckroll has been amazing in this because she understands this process very well. So she's been instrumental and the teaching and learning department in really setting up the scaffold and the outline of what we need to do. So teachers are now writing assessment questions based on those high priority standards so that we can give to our kids. And what that allows us to do is to give a pre assessment, analyze that work, to see where kids need support, where kids are thriving, where we can push them to that next level, or how do we provide remedial work for them? And so once we give that, that helps us plan out our mini lesson or our lessons. And then it allows us to start sorting kids into groups to say, what, what can we do for these guys? These guys are all, you know, having trouble with regrouping across a zero. So we can bring them together for a five to ten minute mini lesson or a focus group and get them the instruction they need on that, and then they might take off. So as we look at math, it's not just, if they don't know this, they don't understand everything. They might just be missing a little piece and how can we fit that piece in and get them to understand it and let them take off? So that's, that's the critical work of of standards. But as you asked about the vertical articulation, we all build. You know, what what they learn in first grade, it they have to, they need to know that in second grade, then it's in third grade and fourth grade. So it's layering on. So if they're missing a skill or if it's a skill that we didn't teach, now that grade level is that much further behind. So we have to really look at that. And I think what it does is it increases the teacher's capacity to really truly understand why they need to teach this and why it's so critical for students to learn it because it's so critical for those other grade levels.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
I just have one other quick question.
Yep, go ahead, Lauren.
Just, just talking about your goal areas that you had, I think you've got some pretty impressive goals. The ten percent MCA reading and five percent MCA math. Is that based on the data then from two years ago into this coming year? And it and it, before you answer that, I will say, I mean, I appreciate even just all the detail that you went in just now with Natty's question. I think we've got, we have to move the needle here. And I think that you're taking that on and I I appreciate that. And I know that these goals seem high, but they're also critical and we need to get there. So making sure that the staff have the support and the tools and the resources that they need to get there. And I appreciate your energy and and your detail on that. But just to clarify, again, the the percentage increases on those scores.
They were two years, that that is two years ago. We we are still operating off of that. And like I said, my goals are lofty, but our kids deserve that. If we don't shoot for that goal, where do we land? And I think if incremental is is good if we make it, but I I think our kids deserve more. And that's where my passions lie is to really to push that needle. That that's why I was hired in Columbia Heights. That's my goal, my number one goal beside student safety. But is we have to get it moving. And I think we truly can. The people at Valley View, the teachers at Valley View are ready for that challenge and our parents are so supportive. And we've learned that over this past year as as, you know, we maybe had one person in the classroom before, now we have twenty in the classroom and we have that support. And I think that was an eye opener to us is how much our parents can really help we engage them in that in that work.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much, Jason, Principal Coleman and Bondo Nuembe. Sorry, I didn't introduce you earlier. I was looking at the wrong set of notes in front of me. So thank you.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. Have a great evening.
You too. We'll move on strategic direction D, securing and effectively managing our resources, human, financial and physical. And I want to make sure I have the right people this time. So that is the one and only Brian Hennekenz, our Director Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. Give me a minute here and hopefully you guys are all seeing this now.
Yep.
So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values as in all of our strategic direction presentations, looking across the board of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation. This is an informational update, no governance questions this evening. Again, here's our strategic roadmap overall. And again, this this process, this for for this strategic direction, nineteen twenty was our baseline year as we're moving forward. I'm going to have to make this, there we go, so I can see my own information. So D one bond projects. So the two areas looking at in the bond projects, we I've presented a lot on the bond projects over the last eighteen months. So D one one approved bond projects completed on time, D one two approved projects completed within budget. The first one completed on time. We met our goals for substantial completion on both projects. I would say that on our high school project and while actually both our high school and our our elementary project, of course, substantial completion doesn't mean that we don't have any contractors or workers coming on site anymore. There's, there's always going to be punch lists that we're going through and there was no, that would, these projects had, there was no exception to that. There was definitely people coming through and doing punch list items and cleanup. But we had substantial completion and we were able to take back the sections of the buildings that were under construction and and occupy them, which was the goal. And then the second part approved bond projects completed within budget. They, we actually overall in the project were under budget by about three percent. And so that was fantastic news considering we had to with our high school project, we had an additional component that was added into that that we had to work with the city and the state on in that bringing our high school up to code for our area separation project that's going to be kicking off in the summer of twenty-one here. And we'll have that completed in the summer of twenty-one. And those remainder funds with the bond project will will go towards that project. Second part, D two, fund balance. And again, like last year, we're at vision, we're in that six to twelve percent. Obviously, we've recently presented on our audit, closing out the year FY twenty. And we were at eight point two four percent for our fund balance, still maintaining in that vision category of six to twelve percent. The annual variation in from established budgets, we're in that three to six percent range progressing, which is where we were last year. And last year we were, I think, around the five percent, just under five percent. This year we're we're pretty much right at three percent. If I had that actual number right in front of me. I don't have it exactly, but so we're in that three to six range and progressing. So of course our vision is is getting that variation under three percent. Budget alignment, so percent of general fund applied directly to the classroom, sixty-five plus percent. We were at vision last year. We increased that percentage a little bit this past year, but it still, obviously, we were already envisioned, so we remained in that vision category. Quality of facility grounds and looking at the climate survey. Again, we remained in that vision this year. So I I I think there's a lot of pride taken with the custodial crew and how they work with our buildings and our grounds and maintaining them. Operating levy in comparison to similar metro districts. Obviously, we haven't changed our operating levy in the recent years and we still remain in that lower half of similar districts. And then the community satisfaction with districts on financial decisions. Notice there isn't a mark this year. We were at vision last year and for the previous year's data. We typically, this would go out on a community survey. And we've put out a lot of surveys in the last year. But they have definitely been focused on other things with the pandemic. And so this question did not get on a survey for this year, for this past year. But we'll make sure that moving forward that the survey, this questioning gets back on survey, any one of the surveys that goes out to the community. So we have data to report for next year. So with that, we are, last year we were at a point four point three five, this year at a four point six. And that's mostly due to the changes in those bond projects. The previous year we didn't have those as part of the equation because the bond projects weren't completed. This year, obviously, they are completed and so they're a factor in the overall score. With that, I will stop sharing.
All right, any questions? All right. Thank you, Brian. I think you're on deck again for the financial forecast.
Yes. All right, let me get this presentation closed. And the next one started here. Let me share my other screen here. Hold on one second. That's probably, do you see the presentation now?
Yep, we can see it.
All right. All right, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik, the next item that I have The next item that I have is presenting on the 2021, 2022 financial forecast for next fiscal year. There we go. Our mission statement, creating wealth of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values focusing on community, collaboration, integrity and courage. So I'd like to start with this, this is information that has been presented on, I know recently, this is right out of the audit. So we're really looking at, you know, closing, we closed our books on FY '20, you know, back in December. And so we're presenting on that information. So this is, we're the, this first part of information, you know, this is where we ended up last year. And then we'll kind of lead into some of the assumptions that we know and what we're forecasting, looking down the road in, in, you know, our expenses and in other areas. So again, you could see that a five-year snapshot, our fund balance was going up. And every year, still, you know, staying right in that, actually last year, it just slightly exceeded the fund balance. Policy set by the school board at 12 and a half percent. And this last year, we dropped down to 8.2%. So obviously that's not something you'd like to see. There were several reasons for that. And we'll kind of see that in a future slide here, I'll kind of talk about that. So I think the categories, you can see, this is just another look at that fund balance drop. But we see the restricted and assigned areas where the significant areas of, of things changing. And, you know, we, we did have some dollars that we were saving with long-term facilities maintenance and capital dollars. That we're, you know, earmarking for future projects, that projects, those projects were the bond projects and allocating those dollars towards the bond projects. So we were building up, you know, those restricted and, and assigned balances. And, and then we, we spent them out through the bond project. So that definitely was a factor in that, you know, in, in that drop, in that fund balance. Or one of the major factors, a major factor in that fund balance drop last year. And then also, obviously, and we'll talk about that a little bit more too, you know, other factors. When you typically see a fund balance drop is declining enrollment, which we will see. Our general education aid, you can see a snapshot over time here, over 10 years. Back in 2011 was the last year, 0% that we received. And that was right after, you know, the state had its own financial problems with recession. And so if the state is in financial troubles and seeing deficits, then the school districts are going to see most likely 0% and, and, and state age shifts, which we'll talk a little bit more in a minute. But you can see that we balanced over the last few years at 2% every year. And then as we look forward, we'll talk about, in future slides, we'll talk about our assumptions moving forward. General fund resources or fund sources of revenue, this was again recently shared through our audit. You can see that most of our revenues come from state aid. And then you can see that the green in the bottom are our local taxes and the revenues we receive from those. And specialized cross subsidy is something we've talked a lot about in the past. And, and the impact it has on the overall general fund for the school district. And you can see over time, that cost to the school district has increased quite a bit. And we're, you know, in 2019, we were just shy of $5.7 million in cross subsidy. There's, there's def, there's been some changes in funding with special ed that allowed that number to drop a little bit this past year. But you can see it's still a significant cost to the general fund every year of that specialized cross subsidy at over $5 million still. So some of the additional assumptions that we're looking at as we head into the next fiscal year, as we're trying to prepare that budget and, and talk about staffing is, is, as I mentioned before, enrollment is declining. Our current enrollment in the district is through just over 3,000, 3,083, which is actually down from fiscal year '20, 163 students. This was a snapshot in time from about two and a half weeks ago. So that number definitely has shifted a little bit in the last few weeks. But again, this was a snapshot in time. So if you want to put, you know, just some rough dollars and cents to that number. And if you just did an average of 10,000 per student, that's $1.6 million roughly. That's a negative impact to the school district. We assume, you know, part of that, that, you know, the pandemic does play into that. Like many other districts across the state and across the nation, we're seeing a decline in enrollment, especially in pre-K and K. At those, those younger introductory, those grades coming into the school system. And so they definitely equate for a big portion of that, almost half of that, they're, they're, they're factoring into. So I think that's definitely something to note. You know, and we have seen over time, a bubble in, in, in our, our grade sizes. And that, you know, there is also a bubble on live births in the area too. So we're, you know, we're seeing some, a, a bubble of smaller class sizes and we hope that rebounds. And, and then we'll start seeing an increase. Of course, the pandemic is throwing a whole new twist on that and trying to figure out what our, our estimate, what our enrollment will be going forward. So we assume elementary enrollment, you know, will likely continue to decline a little bit. Though, you know, it's a very tough, tough thing to understand right now, considering we know our kindergarten's low. We know that everybody's kindergarten is low or almost everybody's is. And, and, you know, with the vaccinations rolling out and, you know, how will that impact the start of the next school year? Will families be more comfortable with bringing their kids back in? I know, where do they exactly go? You know, you know, we assume that if they held them back, they're gonna, they're gonna be back and our numbers will be back more stable. But we're just not sure. We, we assume that secondary enrollment will remain stable. They've, they've received those bubbles of larger class sizes and, and we do believe that that will remain stable. We believe that, or we're assuming that class sizes will maintain where we're at, a 24 to 1 for elementary and 30 to 1 for secondary. That's been a very important thing for, for the school district to maintain those class sizes. Revenues in the areas of integration aid and development grants and competitive trade aid will continue to tick align with those free and reduced lunch applications. You know, we've seen a, a slow decline in that area over the last few years. And, you know, we assume that that will continue to decline. And again, we're not sure how the pandemic is going to affect that. We're going to assume that that special across subsidies, we assume that it did decrease a little bit and will maybe decrease a little bit more with, with some age shifting. But it's going to remain a substantial cost. You know, it, it's, it's just going to remain that, around that, that 5 million mark. We know that TRA, well, salary and benefit costs for subtle contracts were, you know, as they're happening, we're inputting them as actials for the budget assumptions. TRA contributions, we know, increased by 0.21 of a percent. We know that we have a few faculty and staff retirements, which will of course affect our forecasting. And, and so we're factoring those in. And we're right in the midst of trying to figure out where our healthcare costs are going to be for next year. And we really hope by the end of February, we'll have a hard number with that. Initially, we were thinking that our increase would be around that 3 to 4%. And, and that has shifted. And the market is concerned about the pandemic. And there, it's concerned that they're gonna, they're gonna see a big increase in claims. And so right now, it's gonna, it's gonna be interesting how that negotiation goes in the month of February with our pool. And, and where that number really lands at. So we hope again to have that number by the end of February, so we can lock that into our budget assumption. For this next year, we're supposed to have a cap at 7 and a half percent. So, you know, that, it's very, it's a potential that it could be at that cap at 7 and a half percent. The, the meeting I had earlier today forecasted that if we were to lock that in today. That we would be close, we would be about 7.4% just under that cap. So definitely that factor. We're going to assume activities levels and practices will remain as approved by the board. We assume transportation costs will increase by 3% per the contract. And desegregation transportation aid is, has been eliminated. And we're, we're, and that's a, that's a big financial impact to us. As, as we're, we're busting those, we're bussing students and we used to have that DSEG aid, which was about a, it's about a $500,000 impact to transportation. And then that general education formula, right now, I think across the state, a majority of school districts are assuming a 0% like we are. I know that recently, what was today? You know, the, the forecast that we have from back in December, put the next biennium at a $2.6 billion deficit with inflation. And, and I know that we will receive an updated forecast at the end of February. We hope we will receive an updated forecast at the end of February. And I know the governor is talking about 1% for education next, the next biennium and then a, then a 2.5% following. And I, I don't have a lot of hope for that, if that's the starting point. Again, how that forecast comes at the end of February will tell the story. But, you know, it's going to be much more likely that we'd be, we would see something more like a zero and a one. And, and, and we'll see, I mean, time will tell. But that's, I think that again, you know, majority of the districts across the state are really looking at that 0% in their assumptions as that formula increase. And, and I think the four or five slides earlier, we saw that we, you know, we've received 2% over the last six years now, I think. And so the additional expenditures, when we're looking at this, every year we have staff roll-up costs, step in lane changes based on education, based on years of service. And so those costs are, are pretty sta, uh, stable for our district each year. And, and we know, we know what we can factor in, in with those and our benefit increases. And, you know, between the two, you know, we're just shy of a, of a million dollars every year in those roll-up costs. And then you have the transportation on top of that. And again, that transportation had a, a 3% for this next year. Plus the, the loss in the desegregation revenues. So we have some of those budget assumption expenditures that are just there. And, and given the declining enrollment and, and what we, our assumptions are there, it's going to be, we're, we're building into a very tough budget for FY '22. And that's, you know, we're currently working on revising this year's FY '21's budget. And then we immediately move into, you know, building that preliminary budget for FY '22.
All right, questions? I know we discussed this last week at, at more length at our work session, but wondering if people have follow-up questions as they've had a little more time to think? If people want to ask questions for the sake of the community? You took your glasses off, is that meaningful? Okay, Lorian.
I took my glasses off so I could see you.
Oh, all right.
But yeah, if I could just, you know, and I want to thank Brian for putting that together and talking with us at our work session last week as well. I think even for those folks that are listening or watching this online in our community, knowing that we've got some challenges ahead. And I think that part of what we're goal, our goals are looking for is to be transparent and, and letting our community know that we've, you know, that, that, that we've got an obligation to be fiscally responsible. The funding comes from designated sources. It's not like we can sell more brownies and, you know, get more bussing. We don't make a product that, that can sell. You know, we, we work with, with students and learning and knowledge. And I think, you know, because this is going to come up again at our first action item as well, as we talk about the fiscal responsibility and the challenges that our district has. Looking at the, at the pandemic, looking at just at what things cost at this point, looking at our, our staff roll-up costs. And I, I think as all of us are concerned to making sure that the teachers, the staff that are working in our buildings are compensated in a, in a fair way, that their benefits are comparable to other districts. There's, there's things that, that we have to do to operate the, the district as, as well as we are. And those things cost money. So I think just opening up that conversation in the ear to the community, knowing that, that Brian and his team and all of the district are knowing that, you know, where the funding is coming from. And then we've got some challenges that we're going to look forward to in the future as well. Well, not look forward to happily, but that.
That will happen in the future, right. Yeah, thanks for that. Other questions or comments? Molly, then Mary.
Thank you. Brian, I think sometimes, you know, as a board and at these meetings, we talk about the special education cross subsidy. And everybody, you know, at the table understands that. But if you could, and it's so complicated, but if you could just in a few sentences kind of sum that up for the community? Because this is something that isn't new this year. It's been building and building and building and really to, to give some, you know, idea to the, to the, those watching of what that impact has been.
Thanks Molly for that question. And I should have assumed a guest that that was going to be a question. The, so yeah, this, the cross subsidy is something that's obviously newer for me. It's not something that I've had to think a ton about, you know, before I took over the finance and operations for the school district. And I mean, we receive, we receive a funding for our special ed department, for our, you know, for our special ed students. And, and, you know, the, the needs for those students range quite a bit. And that funding doesn't even come close to meeting those needs. You know, whether it's the federal government or whether it's the state, they've, you know, whatever they've promised in the past, of what level they'll fund, you know, those additional needs. They're just, the funding doesn't just match it. So if the funding that we're receiving isn't matching the, the costs and the needs of those students, that the dollar, the expense has to come from somewhere and it comes from our general fund. So it, it comes right out of fund one then. And, and so it just becomes a, potentially comes a growing and it hasn't been a growing burden on the general fund moving forward. And so that additional, and it's such a problem that, you know, in the past, you know, there may have been some ways the school districts could figure out what that dollar amount was. But now there's just an easy report, you go to MTE and you, and, you know, that we have access to, that we can just run, that'll tell us exactly what it is. Based on our, you know, our, our reporting of student counts and stuff. So they've just made it easy for us to, to know that dollar amount because, you know, across the state, it's, 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 it's a problem. And, you know, we hope that, like I said, there's, there were some shifts and, which, which allowed us to, to gain some additional revenues in that area, which brought that cross subsidy down. So I think, you know, that the message coming from school districts was heard loud and clear that this, this, this draw on the general fund is, is growing for the needs of, of our special education students. And, and so it's definitely, it headed, it went in the right direction. And I, I hope it'll go again this next year, a little bit more in the right direction. But it's really, it's not, has it, hasn't really fixed the problem of, of, you know, the finances of, of how that affects our, our general education funding.
Thank you. And I think two things just to add to that. No, I appreciate that, that definitely helps. Is that, you know, one, we legally have the obligation to educate those children and that B, those are our kids in our district. We're not, you know, going out and finding these other kids, but our district does a fabulous job of educating these children at the, you know, level that they deserve to be. And just understanding that it's not just our district either. This is, this is statewide.
Yes.
And I would just, I know that, Mary, I said you're next, but just because it's on a related topic. The same condition of the difference between what's mandated and, and really what's good for our students. We want to provide the best quality care for our students. And what's mandated and what's funded is, is a pretty wide gap. And Brian mentioned earlier, the, the gap of $5 million in a budget, that's around $50 million is significant. That's 10% of our budget. And that same gap is beginning to occur increasingly in, in, for English learners as well in our EL departments. And so we're just seeing the rise in this kind of increased expectations, which are good because we care about our kids without having the funding. Which has to then that money, we have a responsibility, as we mentioned all the time, to balance our budget. That money has to come from somewhere. And so it's a tough situation. Sorry, Mary, turning it over to you. And then Laura, I see you unmuted. So you're next.
So, I mean, I think we're going to continue this trend of Molly asking the question that I was going to ask. And then also Natty, bringing up the point, it's, again, I think it's important to note, it's, it's not just a legal mandate, it's a, it's ethical and moral mandate to make sure that all kids get equitable access to education. And I think, again, our district does a really amazing job with that. And thinking about the special education cross-subsidy deficit, which is A, a mouthful and B, something that most people don't know about. But again, that 10% in our, you know, budget, that 10% difference is super significant. So thinking about what, you know, people can do to help promote that, because it's not even just, my understanding is it's not even just our state legislature that helps fund that, that is also the federal government. And so what can people at home do? What can we do, like as community members, as, you know, how can we advocate for, for some legislative change on this to continue to push? Because I think at the end of the day, because it, it's a legal, ethical, moral mandate, we have to do this and the money has to come from somewhere. And if it's not coming from those entities that promised us those, that money, it's coming from other sources, like you said. So what can we do to help address that gap with our legislators and congresspeople?
I'm not sure, Brian, if you were ready for the, the lobbying speech. I don't want to pin you, I know this is a new role, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's something that we should always be mentioning to them. It's, it's, you know, they, they, they really lobbied hard. I mean, we did in the last, you know, I would say two years on this, it's very topic. And, and it, like I said earlier, I think it had an impact. There's, 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 there was a recognition of that. And, and, you know, we were able to raise more revenues within the special ed area. And it did, the cross-subsidy did drop. But, you know, I, I just hope that we, we don't forget about it, you know, at that state level, because we can't. It's, it's just so impactful. It's necessary, as we've said, but very impactful and on, on, I mean, the costs are necessary, but very impactful to, you know, the rest of the organization and the general fund. So it can't be forgotten about. I know that there's been a lot of recent conversations about, from, from organizations that we, you know, we belong to about lobbying for, I mean, real financial changes within how we fund schools. And, you know, I'm excited for, you know, the potential there and given the landscape that we have right now. So we'll, we'll see. I mean, it's, again, it's a very tough conversation when your, when your, your starting point is a deficit in the state, you know, even though that there's energy behind that and, and there's need behind that. So, you know, I'm, I'm just hopeful that, you know, things will turn for the, for the more positive as far as the state's financial situation, which just helps the school districts' arguments for our needs for our students.
Thank you.
You can also, Mary, I know this is something we talked about even before you were on the board, when you were a, a parent serving on the PTO over at Valley View is, you can look at the AMSD platform, the Association of Metropolitan School District platform. If people want to go there, they have a really succinct summary. And at last, I checked, there's also a short video or informational article on our website about, about the special education cross-subsidy that explains it. So you can go there. I don't, is it still up? Do we know?
I, we can check.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
It should still be there.
Laura, I see you're still unmuted there.
Yep. I, I do want to mention too, the tremendous amount of work that's, that's gone into mitigating some of these costs by Bondo and our previous special education directors on being able to serve more of our students in, at home. There's been some amazingly good work in putting together some programs that, that we have more control over the costs. And in addition to that, the collaboration that we're able to do with other school districts as well, I, I would say 916 has been, has been extremely beneficial for helping us with all of this. And I, I, if we were doing all of this all alone, that cross-subsidy would be so much larger. And if it wasn't for the innovation of, of, of our directors to put together, to, to give, do what's right, but more, you know, more fiscally manageable, that number would be much, much larger. So I, I certainly appreciate every, every, every effort that's made to. Sorry, my cat's kind of bugging me right now. A little distracting. I just want to, I just want to, I just want to thank the, the directors for being, for, for putting together these programs, you know, because we're able to run some of this stuff in-house that isn't quite as expensive.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Director Hennekenz, for that presentation on the financial forecast. We will now move on to the policy first reading. So we'll introduce a few policies here for first reading. Those policies include Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition Policy, 601, the School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals, 607, Organization of Grade Levels, 612.1, Development of Parental Involvement Policy for the Title I Programs. And these policies will appear on a, a future agenda for approval. Just note that they're now out there for the public to view, for the board members also to review. They've made it through the policy subcommittee. And they're out there and we'll have them back. So if you have comment on them, please let us know. We'll move on to action items. The, first of all, we'll begin with the discontinuance of programs and positions resolution. That was mentioned earlier or just a moment ago in our meeting. Ken, oh, I'm sorry, Director Hennekenz, this one's also you, correct? No, Lin, Director, I'm sorry. It's hard because I'm bouncing between Board Book Paper and my, let me actually check it. All right. Directors Hennekenz, nope, Directors Bennett and Hennekenz, thank you. And Superintendent Stenbik.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Tonight, the board will be asked to adopt the resolution directing the superintendent and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs and positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. We discussed this at the January 12th work session as an information item. It's an annual resolution, which really has the superintendent, along with the admin team, start to look for efficiencies in order to balance the school district budget. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of this resolution.
All right. Can I get a motion to move this one forward? And then I'll read it after we get a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I got Halla, second?
Second.
Molly, great.
Molly.
Awesome. I will read it. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendation for the reduction in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has brought unforeseen expenditures not covered by the CARES Act funding and whereas the special education cross-subsidy has grown to, grown over the last five years, requiring the school district's general fund to cover over $5.6 million for this obligation last year. And whereas English learners' cross-subsidy continues to be a yearly approximate $0.8 million dollar cost, requiring the school district's general fund to cover this obligation. And whereas the school district's budget is based on declining projected enrollment. And whereas the financial condition of the school district is dependent on federal, state, and local revenues, and these have not been sufficient to cover the total cost of ownership for the school district's expenditures. And whereas transportation or costs are projected to increase. And whereas the school district has an obligation to balance the budget on an annual basis. And whereas reduction in expenditures and school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs if necessary. And whereas a determination must be made as to which faculty and staff contracts and programs may be terminated and not renewed and which licensed staff may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools Administration to consider the discontinuance of positions and/or programs to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. Make the recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of positions, curtailments of positions, discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, in order to balance the school district budget. As we begin discussion, I would just point out that this is an annual resolution that we make. This is to begin the process of finding those resolutions. As we sit from a board perspective, we don't have this looming list, but this just allows the district administration to begin that process. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I'll make one other question or one other comment, just kind of reiterating what I said at the previous discussion about the fiscal responsibility in terms of, you know, having to go through the exercise of making sure that we find the efficiencies where the efficiencies are. And the timing is important of this because of what's required in contract language in terms of when notifications need to be made, should there be made any adjustments or position elimination. So that is all regarded to the timing of why we do it at this time during the year.
Yep. Other comments or questions? All right, this is an action item, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to certificate pricing and board ratification of sale of aid anticipation certificates with Director Hennekenz and Kelly Smith from Baker Tilly.
Thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik, as presented at the previous regular school board meeting to get approval for the sale of our aid anticipation certificates at this meeting that's happened this morning. And at this meeting, we're asking for approval to ratify that. And we have the resolution before you. So I think, you know, overall, we're happy with how that went. And interest rate that will be paid at the end at maturity in September is just over 1%. So I think, if you have any fastball questions for me that I can't handle, we have Kelly Smith from Baker Tilly that we worked with on the anticipation.
All right, before we do questions, we'll, I'll ask for a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Mary, a second?
Second.
Molly, okay. And as we go here, being ample copies are available, and this is a very, very long resolution, available to the public at this meeting or upon request from the superintendent's office. I would like to waive the reading of the resolution relating to $1,010,000 general obligation aid anticipation certificate of indebtedness series 2.21A, ratifying the reward, award of sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof. Can I get a second?
I second.
Lorian, seconds. Dawn and Kelly, did we perform that, that motion correctly legally?
Yes, all, all you really need to do is read that whole, or excuse me, capitalized introduction to the resolution here. So you're, you're fine as long as folks have access to copies of it.
All right. And it's, it's seven pages long. It is in your board book packet for board members. And again, I'll read it one more time, just so the general public can hear the description. It says relating to the $1,010,000 general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness series 2021A, ratifying the ward of sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment thereof. All right. Any questions for Mr. Smith or Director Hennekenz?
Can I just ask a process question on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we need to vote on the waiving of the reading or just on the motion itself to, for passing the resolution?
Well, we should vote on the, we should vote on the waiving of the reading, I suppose. Or is, is that just a motion and we, this is where we need our parliamentarian?
Yes, I, I do believe we do need to vote on this because we had a, a vote and a second, and now we need to.
We're going to vote on waiving, so this vote is on waiving the reading of the seven-page one and going for the amendment. So let's vote, just to be safe. We don't want to miss on this one. So Laura, if you would do a roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis. Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. Great. We have read twice the, the title of the motion. And again, if you would like to read this more specifically, the resolution, we can make that available to you. Just contact the superintendent's office. Now, discussion, thank you, Lorian, for that. Discussion on the, the resolution itself? Before you leave and before we vote, Kelly, I just want to say thank you for joining us again and for helping us through this process. It's been.
Happy to do it too. Thank you.
All right. Laura, can we get a roll call vote on the resolution itself?
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, resolution passes. Great. We will move on to Valley View Boiler Plant bids.
Thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. The next couple items are a little bit more straightforward and everyday items for us. So we are, we have our Valley View Elementary Boiler Plant. Again, that's a school that's receiving its heat currently from Columbia Academy, and this would implement boiler plant within the building, the same as what we did at Highland Elementary a few years ago. We had bid opening on December 15th. Bid tabulations and a letter of recommendation from Hallberg Engineering was presented as an informational item at the January 12th meeting. And as presented at the previous meeting on that info item, we are seeking approval to move forward with the blow, with the lowest responsible bidder of boiler services with a base bid of $379,000.
All right, thanks. Questions on this one? All right. We have a roll call vote, Laura.
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you for the boiler bid. And windows, also Director Hennekenz, these are the remaining North Park Elementary School windows.
Yes, thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. Seal bids for the North Park Elementary Window Replacement Project were open on January 7th. The bid tabulations and letter of recommendation from Carl Sanderson was presented to the School Board at the January 12th meeting as an info item. And again, as presented at the previous meeting, seeking approval to move forward with the lowest responsible bidder. And this project, which was Valpro Windows, with a base bid of $221,656. And Valpro, again, as presented as a company we've worked with on two different projects now for window replacement. So we feel confident in moving forward with that company.
All right, can I get a motion to move this one forward?
So moved.
That's Lorian. And a second?
Second.
Mary?
Mary.
Mary.
Can we do a roll call vote, please? Or discussion on this one? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai. Samurai?
I think she's trying to unmute here.
Aye.
There it is.
Lewis.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Aye. Can you guys hear that?
Yes, we did hear you, Hala, thanks. All right, motion carries. I do have a procedural question from the boiler. Did I ask for a motion on that, Dawn?
That's what we were just-
You're just texting about that. I didn't write it down, so I, I went back-
I, I do not remember you doing one, that's why.
No, I didn't. So we're going to have to revote on that one, guys, so if you wouldn't mind going back. So the motion, so the motion carries on the windows and all this procedural stuff. Sorry if you're watching. I'm still learning as the board chair after a year. So there was a, Director Hennekenz presented on sealed bids for the Valley View Elementary Boiler Plant Project. Were opened on December 15th, 2021, and bid tabulations and a letter of recommendation from Holberg Engineering was presented as an informational item at the January 12th regular school board meeting. As prevented at the, as presented at the previous meeting, we're, he's seeking approval to move forward with the lowest responsible bidder, Boiler Services Inc. with a base bid of $379,000. Brian, did I get that right?
Yes.
All right. We're going to need a motion to ca, a motion to move that one forward.
So moved.
That's Lorian. And a second?
Second.
Molly, all right. Now we're going to have to redo that roll call vote, because we have an actual motion to vote on. Or first, does anyone have questions? I guess you can have boiler-related questions. The exciting world of steam pipes. All right, hearing none, we'll do the roll call vote.
Mueller.
Aye.
Grandland.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, that motion also carries. Thank you for putting up with me, y'all. That is our last action item for tonight. We will move on to board topics. Dawn, thank you for putting up with me, and I'm, I'm proud I noticed it during the meeting instead of after the meeting. Sorry for everyone about that. Thank you for putting up with me. Board topics?
Yeah, Natty, if I could.
Please.
Superintendent Stenbeck mentioned this before, but just on behalf of the board, I know we can't speak for each other all the time, but I think it's, goes without doubt that we all just appreciate our pair of professionals, appreciate everything that they're doing to teach our students, to be there for them, to support them, in all the different ways that they do. Just a huge thank you to all of them.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much to our pair of professionals, and what a year you've had, served in so many ways that were probably extremely unexpected, and we're very thankful for that.
And I think Molly does speak for the board on, on that. I would agree.
Yeah. Other, other board topics. Lorian did mention a city event coming up this weekend.
Yep, Snow Blast at Houston Park.
At Houston Park.
It looks like a lot of fun, winter fun.
The lights this fall were also fun, so it's a good chance. They did a great job with social distancing and safety, so hopefully that continues.
I'd also like to add, to make sure that, that you're picking up your school materials. Those are available this week. I believe it's tomorrow and Thursday, and if you have any, to, to make sure that you get them so that your students are ready for third quarter.
Third quarter, here we go.
Friday too, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Thursday evening is the evening option, I think, one of, somebody said it earlier, correct?
All day, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but Thursday is an additional evening option.
Okay, great. Other, others?
I know Valley View's PTO has a fundraiser this week, so after you pick up your child's things, head on over to Jersey Mike's. And I'll make sure to promote any other ones that I hear, so Jersey Mike's is going to donate 50% of the sale towards the, I think, I think it's 50%. Don't quote me. It's on, it's on the Facebook page, but anyway.
Look at the Facebook.
What, Facebook? It's on the Valley View PTO Facebook page.
All right.
Really specific on where you can find that information.
Sounds good. Well, it was great to see you all, some in person, some on Zoom. We will adjourn the meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board on January 26th, 2021 at 8:39.